Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, May 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. First, order of business, if everyone would stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Would the Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson may.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg. Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier. Commissioner King.
Here.
Okay. Next, we need approval of the agenda. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or comment? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye. Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's... Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over approval of minutes. So let's go back to approval of minutes for the regular meeting of March 9th, 2023.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of March 9th, 2023.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye. Now, we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items only. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, you can stand and be recognized. Yes, approach to the podium, please. Identify yourself and...
My name's John Murray on Lather Street. My concern is, is at the DDA, they're talking about bringing in an Economic Development Director. I question if that's a proper procedure because as of right now, I think we have unanswered questions like, what is the DDA area? What are the codes and regulations we have as an example of Albertson Alley? To this day, I do not know exactly what all the issues were, but I myself was not happy about putting a banquet facility in that area. So, as a planning commission, can you ask directions from council on creating a mission statement or an idea plan of what is the DDA?
Well, that's not really our purview to control anything about the DDA. They're completely separate from the planning commission, and you should probably talk to the council about that, sir.
I'm maybe looking for your help in communicating with them because I've had my share of obstacles. I have a FOIA about the managerial audits. Has been done forever, and that creates a philosophy of what we want to do in our area. And I'm wondering, what can we do to make your job easier? Because we also need to have code and ordinance compliance of certain issues. And one of the big concerns I have is the flooding and stuff of that nature. And I think it's Gilman Street and Ford Road where we let them buy a lot. They put in a complete parking lot. How do we know how that water there is going to go into the storm system? And does that not create some of the flooding issues we have? Because after that last flood we had, at Deering and Elmwood, they had to cut into the system for what reasons I don't know. And then at Helen and Maplewood, we have flooding in the area. How can the planning commission and the council work together to relieve that problem? We need to get the county involved, and we have to be proactive because our property values will just plummet if we don't get this problem under control. So, I'm asking your help and any other group that we have in town that wants to step up. And we got to push to have a defined plan of where we're going to go with this community. Flooding is an issue. And you see in Dearborn Heights, Dearborn, because of how they've allowed them to build these colossal homes, there is no place for the water to go but to the storm system. And it's what, in the 50s is when all that was designed. So what can we do as a community to make it better?
Okay, sir. Well, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else have anything about non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on. Two business items. The first item is scheduling a public hearing for the property at 30712 Pardo. We have a memorandum concerning this issue because of previous comments. So, Mr. Ortega, could you explain where we stand here?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, as you're familiar with 30712 Pardo, it was before you as a recommend... It was an application to rezone the property from single-family residential to conditional R3 to allow for 12 townhouse units. They also wanted modifications to their yard setbacks and their minimum required parking standards. Eventually, when it made it to the city council on April 3rd, the city council actually did deny that rezoning to R3 based on those original conditions of the conditional rezoning. Zoning ordinance states specifically that no application for a map amendment or rezoning that has been denied by city council shall be reconsidered for one year unless there have been changes in the facts, evidence, and/or conditions of the case. And determination of whether there have been any such changes shall be made by the planning commission. So, the applicant has submitted a new application for rezoning additionally to R3. And in this case, they would like to have 10 units.
Instead of eight.
So, based on the zoning ordinance requirements of density, they're allowed eight units on that piece of property. They're requesting 10. In this 10-unit configuration, they would no longer require any modification of parking. They would meet the parking ordinance requirements, and they would meet... So, they would have guest parking on the site. No longer have a need for modification of their side yard setbacks. They would be able to buy the side yard setbacks in condition that would be consistent with the zoning ordinance requirements. So, as the ordinance states, the planning commission has to make that determination as to whether the details of this new version of the plan is
is substantially modified from the original.
So, the request before you tonight is just to schedule a public hearing at your next meeting so you can gather comments on this revised application, determine whether it is substantially different and should be forwarded with your recommendation on the rezoning to city council.
So, you would ask us to make that determination after we schedule a public hearing, at the public hearing, or before we schedule a public hearing?
The zoning ordinance is then actually clear with regards to that. So, I think that leaves you per view as to whether you
would like to schedule that.
Either schedule the public hearing, hear comments, and then make that determination? Or make that determination first?
Well, personally, I think because we've just now been advised of this that we should have a little time to consider whether this is a substantially changed proposal enough to allow approval or not. So, I'm thinking that it would be better to make that decision at the next meeting when we schedule a public hearing.
But would we be getting the drawing done this new revision?
They will be submitting a revised drawing, yes.
I might like to take a look at that before I agree with anything.
Okay, so that wouldn't come until the public hearing?
Well, that can be... Prior to schedule. Mainly, it will be... It is the same drawing. It's just that instead of six units, it's five... You know, I mean, instead of 12 units, it's 10 units. And then it just shows that the setbacks would be 20 feet on each side, 20 feet away from the west side property line and 20 feet away from the shotka property line.
And no metal, we still have a special public hearing anyway.
That's another thing that isn't exactly clear. Normally, whenever there's an application for rezoning, it is something that, you know, is a right of request by the property owner, and they have the opportunity to gather the public input.
You make your recommendation to approve or deny that application?
Because this is one that we've already seen. And because the ordinance specifically states that you make a determination whether it's substantially different... Substantially different. And then the original in substance, then that's something that...
But without having a drawing to compare to apples and apples, it's hard to make that determination. And normally, it's turned out to the council in six or a year. So, let's get a drawing.
Yeah. And in addition to that, I think we should have a little more information on the drawings. They were a little thin on some of the details. Like, I would like color elevations as well as a material list for the facade. And I don't believe it showed screening wall on the west side of the property either. So, those things should be added to the the updated drawings. But if... Is there any other discussion on the matter?
And just, Mr. Ortega, to make sure I'm following you. The proposal here is that we schedule the public hearing prior to seeing the revised drawings. And if I'm hearing my other planning commission members correctly, we want to see the drawings first. So, could we just flip the sequencing?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, it's usually one of the... It's usually, you know... Excuse me. Not that it's usual. It's that the sequence of events isn't outlined in the zoning ordinance. So, you know, one option would be to gather the public input and gather the information. But since it's not, you know, specified, it does make logical... You know, it does make logical sense to gather that information first and make that determination before scheduling a public hearing.
Mr. Kalidus?
Could we have... Could we schedule the public hearing and have the plans at the same meeting?
And have what?
Have the plans at that same meeting so we can hear the public comments and then...
Well, that's what I would expect.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
If you'd like, one option that could be is once again, it doesn't specify if you need to actually make a motion or not. Like, you could have the plans in front of you at that meeting and have it as a separate line item, as an action item. The first item of your agenda would be to determine whether this application is significantly
Before we actually go through with the public hearing.
And then before, go forward with even a public hearing.
Yeah.
That way, if that motion, if you determine that it is substantially compliant, it should not be considered, then that kills the... Kills the motion, and there's no need to have the public hearing. And then, you could have the second agenda item being a consideration of this actual rezoning application.
Yeah, I think that would probably be the most appropriate way to go on it.
Because we can't... We have an old rule of council about we've had a drawing of what we're basing our change or modification that makes it substantially different than what they turned down.
I mean, that's true. It isn't really an overturning of them, but you're right. It is about making sure that whatever gets forwarded to council is a...
That meets the standard of ordinance meeting, but it's substantially different.
Okay, well, then, if everyone's in agreement, we can go ahead with the scheduling of the public hearing and make this a line item before we actually have the public hearing? Okay. So, this is the proposed conditional rezoning from R1, one-family residential to R3, multiple-family residential for 10 townhome units. Want to make a motion to schedule that?
Could I just have one more question from Mr. Ortega? Would it be possible to get a side-by-side? Here was the
Oh, absolutely.
The initial proposal, here's the revised proposal, and kind of the breakdowns. That way, we can make that determination.
Yep, absolutely.
Motion necessary?
Yeah, I make the motion that we... A motion to look over the paperwork, side-by-side comparison of the two. So, if we can compare and make your recommendation, and not make it to council to review this.
That would... That would be at the same time as the public hearing, then?
Yeah, to say that is...
And so, we have to propose, schedule for the public hearing. That would be at our next regular meeting?
Okay. If we have to...
As long as we have the site plans available. Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, would the secretary take the roll?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is now scheduled for the next regular planning commission meeting. Moving on. We have other business and discussion items. This is master plan review. Discussion on preferred procedure to conduct a required master plan review. Mr. Ortega?
Yeah, so I just wanted to get some direction from you because we found that it's important to just lay out the procedure for this task ahead of time because not... It can take a while. So, basically, the state law does require that the planning commission review the master plan at any time. And, you know, the intent of the review is so for you to determine that the policies and the visions of the plan itself still reflect the desires of the community. Making sure that the data that's in the plan is still relatively accurate and
Valid.
Making sure that the analysis and conclusions based on that data is also relevant. So, when doing that task, usually involves, you know, the full comprehensive review of the plan involves like a chapter-by-chapter evaluation of these... Of the data, the analysis, and the conclusions.
In each chapter.
As I mentioned, it can... You can actually get kind of bogged down if it's something done during a meeting.
You know, basically, taking a master plan, cracking it open, reviewing the items, and then coming to a conclusion as to whether
validity and quality of the data. What we recommend, and we found... Because we found it's most efficient review process is that the McKenna staff, we would prepare a review memo, a draft review memo, that would summarize and evaluate each chapter of the plan. So, it'd summarize the content of each chapter, an evaluation as...
Accuracy of the data, whether it's valid.
Then present that to the planning commission. Now, this would be mainly... The reason this really works is because it gives you something to react to rather than going through the exercise of trying to come to conclusions collectively. So, it could, you know, make a conclusion in one way, like saying that all the data is valid. And then, if you feel like it's not, then we... Then you direct us to just change the report to say, well, you know, this... This part of the housing data doesn't seem... Does not seem valid any longer. Or this part of the goals and objectives seem to be not appropriate because there's such a change in, say, the commercial character of the city or something like that. So, that's one suggestion. Because what it would be is prepare a review memo for our master plan, provide it to you maybe instead of just one week, maybe two weeks before you begin this exercise. Then you can have a chance to go through the master plan prior to the meeting and go through the memo, and then see if the memo is accurate enough, what your opinion is. And, you know, you can make notes as to like, well, I agree with this, or you don't agree with this.
Your own conclusion is that it's a different direction.
That's one option. The other option is kind of have more of a sit-down workshop where we discuss and review, like I said. Those would take several months depending on the in-depth content. So, that was just a suggestion. So, I'm looking to hear your preference as to how to proceed.
So, if we care to make changes with your first proposal using that method, we would still be able to do that when we vote on it and on a chapter-by-chapter basis, or?
Yeah, absolutely. So, usually with this method, you can go through probably at least two, maybe three chapters in one meeting. Have the summary in front of you, and you'll direct me to say, well, strike this, add this sentence, you know.
So, that way, and then we'll make the edits however you decide
because it's your conclusions of So, it's Just a... Once again, just a document so you can react to it.
You know, you suggest...
You make the edits. Well, you tell me how I will... How it needs to be edited, and then I will
Make those changes. And usually
That means you can get down... Done with the planning and master plan.
Maybe maybe as short as two.
Okay. Any comments here?
Nope, I'd like to see the suggestions.
Yeah, the first method you described seems workable. If it would speed the process along, that would help.
But that's what we did in the past, and I believe that's how we would make the suggestions.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, I was trying to find the last one, but I couldn't. Wasn't sure.
Like you said, I like having this... I like asking ahead of time so that way we're all on the same page.
Not wanting to make any presumptions as you want to do, but I do find that it's effective because then you guys can spend more time discussing, you know, amongst yourselves, you know. Your opinion about it. You have the problems, and it's locked down, and what's on your chest?
Yeah, it gives us some kind of a format to work with and kind of keeps us focused that way rather than going back and forth a lot. Do you need a motion for that?
I don't think so, as long as you
Does everybody agree with using the first proposal that he mentioned?
I believe so.
Diane? Yeah. Yeah, that sounds like the best way to approach it. When would we start doing this?
So, if you like, depending on the items, I mean, I I probably could have it ready by June, the June meeting.
Or would you like to wait till July? Or by July? July, I think, looks like it's sort of June, April, so it's a little tall.
Yeah, we might... Yeah, let's shoot for July.
Okay.
Ready for your July meeting.
Okay. All right. And do we have any update on potential development projects?
Yeah, so I... As you know, I normally don't put this as an agenda item mainly because I deal with property owners every day, not just the days I'm here. I talk to people. But I thought give looking at the master plan. So, just a cursory update for 1847 Inkster. This is the multi-tenant building that's right just south of Ford Road. They're close to getting their Wayne County approvals, so hopefully they'll start their construction soon. But that was a project that was bogged down by Wayne County just because they were... They take a little bit of time. You may have noticed that 27654, the old sheer dimensions, that multi-tenant building that started construction, they demoed the old building. They did the foundation work, and I believe they have most of that foundation work completed. So, they're moving on to the next stages in that. So, those are plans that have been approved and not a new construction. Other things that are... Have been approved administratively that deals with some long-term issues is 29633 Ford, the Golden Feather. That actually has been... We've already received an application, and they're in the middle of reviews and approvals for turning it into a child daycare center.
Really?
Yeah. They... We had a couple come in, and they're in the middle of doing their due diligence period. They've already submitted a commercial certificate of occupancy application. The redevelopment would not require any external additions to the building. So, they're just working with an architect right now to renovate the existing structure because it's obviously... Going from a restaurant to a child daycare center is a little different. The one external thing that they'll need to do is provide an outdoor play area. But that's something that's flat work that's done to the rear. So, they're working with... Like I said, they're working with an architect, and they're working with the state of Michigan on their licensing. And so, they're on their way. They've already submitted their CFO, and so eventually they'll submit their building permit and move forward with that.
And the daycare center would conform to the existing code of zoning?
Yep. So, it's Zone CBD, and actually, in the central business districts, child daycare centers are permitted by right. So, that's why the only thing they needed to do is file for a commercial certificate of occupancy. So, they're good to go. Another item that was approved administratively was 31268 Ford Road, the old Bar 153. We had several interests over the years, but that never came to fruition. But they've actually submitted an application for a CFO for an appliance store. They had some adversity at first because the property, as you know, back in the day, the bar itself took over the entire footprint of the lot on Ford Road, and the people would park in the back on that large vacant parcel. However, when the properties were sold recently, they were not sold together. So, there was a different property owner to the... On the Crowder Street property. And then the Bar and the Ford Road properties, there's technically two lots there for the building, were to another entity. And so, they had to figure out what they were going to do with parking. So, because it's an appliance store, they don't have a very high off-street parking demand. And also, the reason Bar 153 shut down was because the western portion of the building caught fire. So, it was always proposed that demo it. At first, they were going to try and save it if they could find parking somewhere else, but they couldn't. So, they are now... They've already submitted a demo permit application as well as the received site plan approval to demo the west portion of the building. So, it's about 60 feet between the existing car repair because that's where the property line ends, where the building wall begins, and the structurally sound portion of the building. So, they'll tear down about 60 feet, and that's just... I mean, about 50 feet, excuse me, I think is what it is, for enough for a bank of parking along that side of the building.
That would provide adequate parking?
That would provide adequate parking because as an appliance store, their square footage is, you know, mainly occupied by the products themselves. So, they actually don't... They only... I think it was eight... Don't forgive me if I don't know the exact number. But whatever the number was provided on this... Because they had to do it... I made them do an administrative site plan approval to deal with this issue. So, they will be constructing a dumpster enclosure in the old building footprint and enough parking. And so, that will be renovation of that building. So, that's brand-new. Other sites that have long been planned, but, you know, they're working on plans. So, sometimes they don't bring these because things fall through. But these seem to be things that are moving forward substantially. 28484 Ford, the old rallies next to the KFC on Ford Road. They're actually getting ready... They submitted me... To me a plot plan, and so the engineer is moving forward on a two-tenant building that would be a Dunkin' Donuts and then would be an extra tenant space. So, it would be like a two-tenant building, and they would be... Have a drive-through on that site. Now, the... Now, that will be coming before you for site plan review because it's brand-new construction. But they actually don't need special land use... I'm relatively sure they don't need special land use review because the rallies already existed on the site. And I believe that rallies did receive special use approval for the drive-through. So, special use approval for runs with the land. So, as long as they actually did receive special land use approval from the planning commission for that rally's drive-through, then they... Then they'll be before you for site plan. But if for some reason they didn't, and they were just a legacy use, then you'll be looking at the special land use as well. were just a legacy use, then you'll be looking at the special land use as well. But then, like I said, it'd be Dunkin' Donuts on one side of the building and, and an open tenant space.
Do you have any kind of timeline?
It was, it was speedy, it was pretty aggressive and then I didn't hear from them and this is typically what happens as well. And then I, I made contact with them, asking them what their status was and now they're very anxious. So that's how it goes. So similarly, I was also contacted about 29430 Ford, the old same on drugs. They've contacted me a couple times, other people, but in this case, it seems like they're moving forward. It would be conversion to a medical services and physical rehab building. So their floor plan initially looks pretty elaborate in terms of the high quality of the materials and the orient, and the configuration, but it would mainly be all interior renovation. They will not do any kind of addition that would expand the building. It's just renovating the interior of the building.
There's a physical therapy right next to that, isn't there?
Yeah, there is.
Almost right next to it?
Yeah, no, it, yeah, almost correct, almost right next to it. The, there's a retail store in between the two. But yeah, they, they would be there too. It looks like they're a little bit more, they act, one, just to let you know, one clue sometimes for new businesses that get a little anxious is that they tend to set themselves up on Google before they actually get all their approvals, which is fine. It doesn't matter what's on Google. I'm, they don't get approved until they comply with all our ordinance standards. But it was noted that like, they're, they had a website already set up and it was about physical rehab, but then also in hospital care and that sort of thing. So it's a little bit more medical than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was to be a little bit more of beauty services or that kind of, you know.
Yeah, maybe that's how it's differing from the other physical therapy.
Yeah, could be. But like, as I mentioned, they seem pretty interested and typically when I don't hear from someone for a little while, it's because their architects need some time to do their plans. And then finally, one that is, well, the similar vein is 3200 Ford or the old Metropolitan. Someone contacted me and we went over their proposal and it would work with the zoning for an indoor self-storage facility. So the front of the, of the build, of the site is zone C3 general commercial and the rear of the site is zoned actually industrial. So the rear of the site would be capable of handling any type of warehousing. And then the, the southern portion, so directly adjacent to Ford Road, we would have to, it would be, it would have to be a special use that comes to you to consider the indoor storage facility. Now, these facilities aren't currently regulated in our ordinance based on the current market criteria, market characteristics. We basically deal with the kind of older model of what's called just an outdoor stor, not outdoor storage, excuse me, garage-style storage. So the, you know, back several decades ago, self-storage was construction of buildings that had garage door entries that usually 100 square foot or 200 square foot. And then, so we do specify that and they are permitted in the industrial district. So the rear portion of the site, they do want to construct some of those type of buildings, the old school type of buildings. So that would be there. And then the re, the front portion, if you've seen some of the recent self-storage facilities, they actually are all, they're indoor, they're climate controlled and they typically have a retail component to them. So I mentioned to them that you would have to have a retail component, you know, have some portion of the building up front that's open to customers, selling packaged, you know, selling goods for shipping and, you know, boxes, tape, that sort of thing. And revise the facade to, to be a, a retail entity. And then, then the potential could be to have indoor storage climate control through a portion of that building that's zone C3. They would not be allowed to do anything with the parking lot in terms of, you know, outdoor storage. There's no outdoors, any outdoor storage yards can only be in the industrial side. So they could not have, you know, the parking of, say, U-Haul-type trucks for rent. That could not be permitted in the C3.
There's a lot of parking lot there.
I did make them aware of that. I believe they, basically they have about two acres of the C3 designation to the east of the building. And that's only, there's actually a property line between the building and Hubbard. So there's a separate piece of property that's on Hubbard that they, that would not be part of the development. And then technically, they also have one acre of parking lot on the east side of Metropolitan that is occupied by the old used car building. So I mentioned to them, you know, that would be an issue. You'd have to determine what you're going to say you would do with that. I recommended maybe giving that one acre to the adjacent car dealership, you know, if they, if that works, because it seems like that car dealership is in need. And then on the east, on the west side of the building, their initial reaction was that would be enough for employees. And I mentioned to them, that's a, that's a lot of employees for, for a business that actually nowadays is very less with, does not have a lot of employee creation, no. I, I envision at some point, these facilities will be all automated and you'll walk up and give it a QR code or something and get into the building for your unit. Some of them are like that, but not always. Well, some of them, what it is, is some of them offer 24-hour access to the lead, to the people that have a storage unit, but it's only staffed like nine to five. So that's why this is something that would require special use approval come through, you know, we'd have to discuss with them what their proposal is and know what that two acres of vacant, excuse parking.
I can envision them possibly selling that off at some point.
Exactly. Because, and actually that kind of segues in, so that's one where they seemed very interested and they, they were very encouraged by my, me, me letting them know that's something we would be, we can consider because there are other places where they try and do self-storage and I just tell them no because it's not permitted. But in this case, it seemed like because of the dual zoning, that was a potential for that. So.
With these stories in the back in the industrial section, would that have to be screened from the Ford Road side?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, any, anyone that's been coming, that's trying to do storage, I tell them there's screening requirements. So. Even, yeah, especially there. Some other issues, so, so these are longstanding sites that, you know, have been hard to, to develop. Some of these have been. And so I just wanted to share that information because it's, oh, finally something's happening. But then we have some others that, you know, sometimes are, I get a lot of interest in, but for one reason or another, it just never comes through. The, the two that stand out the most are 33011 Ford, the old VFW. You might have noticed the facade of that was modified by the owner. The owner thought that if they took off the existing facade, it might encourage people to have ideas. However, I think the, the quality of the previous elements was a little bit higher than what he proposed, what's existing. But I've often directed people to that property when they have different requests for development and for one reason or another, they can't come to an agreement on prices or moving forward. And then similarly with 30759 Ford, the old Knights of Columbus, which is now vacant. That's something where unfortunately the, the property owner, previous property owners and some developers try and ask for something that's too intense for that site because it's zone C2. They, sometimes the last one, they wanted to try and put a gas station there and I told them that's not permitted and the master plan would not support rezoning. So that's not something that would work. But to me, these kind of last ones and then the fact that these others have taken a long time are basically the, due to the fact that we have some perennial issues in the city. And sometimes they're addressed in the master plan, but the things that come up and are still relevant is the fact that when it comes to like conventional commercial site size, most of our lots on Ford Road lack that depth that's necessary to do, do at least conventional commercial. And what I mean by that is a large enough area for square footage of building and parking to allow for more auto-oriented uses, not auto repair, not auto sales, because those are specifically require two acres or more in C3, you know, not those. But for example, on Ford Road in Dearborn Heights, some of that recent development that occurred on the south side of Ford, opposite of Target, you know, those new multi, multi-tenant buildings, those came in because their depth was about 220 feet, about that. And ours typically can only go about 100 in certain areas. So that's a lot of the things. So then it brings up the issue of the property behind it and whether that could or should be rezoned. Obviously, it's a longstanding issue. It's an issue that faces a lot of communities because of the, just the way that they were previously platted and the fact that that worked at the time. So there's always been, you know, that's why we have the parking district. Some sites have been rezoned to parking that are behind the Ford Road parcels. Some parcels have been bought and converted to parking and some have been bought and converted to commercial, even rezoning, very few, oh, in Garden City. But it's, it's a perennial issue that, you know, the, the master plan tries to deal with, but it's another thing to consider, taking up once again possibly because then it's always then the adjacent single-family users. You know, the, the property owners themselves probably don't necessarily have an issue with getting a, having their property valued as commercial and then, and having it bought as a commercial piece of property. But then it's about that integration into the adjacent uses, excuse me, adjacent homes. There's adjacent homes back there. We have to respect them. But it's a matter of finding that balance between, yes, there's, it's the need of the resident, existing residents, but we're also the, the high, you know, the high tax-paying commercial properties just sometimes aren't gaining redeveloped. And when they get redeveloped and reused, that's generating a lot of tax revenue for the city. And, and it's a tough decision. It happens, it's, it's a longstanding tough issue found in a lot of communities that is, that can, it's a struggle. The one thing I noticed recently is, was, well, not recently, but it's longstanding was, have you ever heard of, well, I'm sure you have heard of, Vincenna Garage up in Berkeley, that they've had issues and lawsuits with the city for, since 2012 about the parking of that, that restaurant. They've been going back and forth and, and the property owner, sometimes he wants to do certain redevelopment and they, they get, they just get, they can't meet in the middle. They recently did and actually just prior to the pandemic, come to a resolution that was supposed to allow for some parking and alleviate some of the parking demand on the adjacent neighborhood. But I noticed that it hasn't been carried out completely. I presume it's because of the pandemic. But that's just one issue that I think is, is kind of, just why I wanted to plant that seed in terms of letting you think about that struggle that we, we face. And then the other being density in general. Because while the, that word sometimes causes people to be very concerned, you know, the fact is that, you know, a lot of, a lot of different generations now, they want to have more density. They want to have more walkable communities. They want to have more transit and that, and, and such to the point that there have been studies done that show that in Michigan, we're losing about 10 to 12% of young people. Once they graduate college, they leave. There's a net loss of young people out of the state because we don't have the type of communities they want to live in. Now, it's not to say that, that there aren't people coming in, but it's just that the net loss of that. And unfortunately, it's one of, it's some, some people phrase it as a thing if they, they understand that it's a problem for the existing residents about making those tough choices about allowing for increase in density. But they also, sometimes they talk about, well, if you want to see your grandkids, do you want to, do you want to have them live closer? Or do you want to have them live in Chicago and New York and, and in other communities? And it's, it's, it's just a struggle that a lot of communities face. So, and they're, and because of the impacts on the adjacent. So I just want to bring those up. This is something I'll reflect in the master plan review, but I just wanted to frame this update in, in that context.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of, Mr. Ortega just informed us about?
Anything, what's going on with the old Amateos? I noticed that they're doing work on the building.
Um, where is that one?
Ford, I'm sorry, Warren and Benoy.
Oh, that's being converted into medical offices.
Okay.
So it'd be two units. Thanks, I forgot.
Okay, moving on then. Commissioners' comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Start with Commissioner Platas.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
I have nothing, thank you.
No, sir. Nothing?
Nothing.
Have anything, Eric? No?
No.
Have anything else, Mr. Ortega?
No, no.
Okay. Our next regular planning commission meeting will be Thursday, June 8, 2023. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.